All right, call to order, the Select Board meeting of April 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM. This is an in-person meeting, 138 Wyndham, Mass., first floor. As a convenience to the public, it is available electronically via the Zoom link below or via HW Cam for viewing participation. In the event of a technology failure, the meeting will continue in person. Please note that other than call to order, all times are estimated. Items may be taken out of order. Executive session, I move the way you enter executive session. Okay, we'll vote yes.
Do we need to read it?
Statewide.
Yeah.
Yes, statewide.
We need to read the pursuant.
Oh, pursuant to general law, blah, 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 38, section 21. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body and the chair, so declares police qualifier TPW Clerical Union.
Second.
Okay, and so vote yes.
Yes, Deidre.
Ben, yes.
There he is.
Shut the sound down.
Input. Purpose for public comment on matters falling within the jurisdiction of the select board and not on the current agenda. Note, public comment on specific agenda items with a public comment period will be deferred until those items are reached. Rules, two minutes per person, a person may speak once, ten minutes total. All participants wishing to address the select board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom by virtually raising their hand. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address. The select board may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comments, but are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody?
Uh, no one on Zoom, and no one in person.
All right, reports and announcements.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, so as mentioned a moment ago, we attended a, a, a party for Tom Tanos, who is stepping away from service in Wenham. So if he had, I drafted something that, something like this will be shared at town meeting as well. But Tom has dedicated over sixty-one years to serving the town of Wenham. His involvement in the government began in the mid nineteen-sixties where he served as an election worker. Since then, Tom has contributed in many capacities, including serving on the Finance and Advisory Committee, a member of the Select Board from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and seven. And then since two thousand and seven, he's served as an elected member of the Board of Assessors until present. In addition to these roles, Tom has been active in numerous town communities, including the Main Street Light Committee, Route Ninety-seven Light Committee, Town Hall and Police Station Building Committees, Veterans War Memorial Committee, and Wish. His longstanding commitment to Wenham reflects an extraordinary legacy of public service, and we thank him for his dedication to the town of Wenham. Certainly sixty-one years is impressive. And obviously you probably assume, but here we are, meeting on April first, uh, with the virtual component. So they did extend the COVID exceptions to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. And one other thing of note that they also extended was to allow the reduction in quorum for town meeting. And this is that again is till June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. At some point, they're going to make these permanent, but keep going now, two-year extensions until then. Um, so the, I see Andrew Goodman, I believe, is on, but continuing to work with the residents up on Spring Hill. Rich, Suzha, and I made a site visit out to view the easement where there is an obstruction, and we're working with the property owners to try to find a solution to that. The planning board is holding their public hearing on that matter on April ninth. We've been pushing DOT for a status update on the Route One A lighting project. They, they won't commit to a, a date, however, they did say that Bayside Engineering, who was the original engineer on it, has merged with FUSE Engineering. Uh, and DOT has been working a lot with them to assist in the transition, in bringing them up to speed with, with the project. Uh, they said that there is a significant amount of outstanding items on the eighty percent complete, uh, build sheet, and that it is still at eighty percent. And, um, they don't know when it will be one hundred percent, which time they could bid the project. But they did say that in order to bring it to a hundred percent, there is going to be additional budgetary needs to resolve some of the outstanding items. So I think that was a way of saying it's a ways out. But we'll continue to, to push, but they won't, they won't give us a, a date or even a couple of years, a few years. Sounds like it's a ways away. Other than that, we've been busy with town meeting logistics, getting the script finalized. As you know, we were in the Warren hearing last night. So, you know, and I think just want to thank Joe, he's been really, really stepped up, running point with the vendors, um, in managing all of that for me to make sure a town meeting goes off smoothly. The family room has created some complexities in the voting clickers. However, you know, a solution, we believe, is identified and, you know, that, that should go off without a hitch. But, so thanks, Joe, for all the work you've been doing there. That's all I have tonight.
What are the sign-ups for the family room? Is it full?
Yeah, well, it's.
About thirty, thirty's the max.
Thirty's the max?
They have sixty-four people.
Right.
Signed up for it, but thirty is the max.
Just like to remind everybody, town meeting, one PM at Buker. Got a lot to talk about.
We do. I'm good.
You too.
Well done.
Sorry to report the passing of Jerry Donellen, who has a forty-five-year career with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, lives in Wenham, and dedicated, he was first elected to the Board of Health and appointed in two thousand and five, and repeatedly elected from two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty-four. So a very long period of service to Wenham, and we send our condolences to the Donellen family.
All right, so.
Minutes.
Consent agenda, routine items for approval and the single motion allowing them to be passed without discussion unless held. Select Board open session minutes for March fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve the select board minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Theodore, yes?
Then yes.
Theodore, yes?
Jerry, yes. All right, new business, items for individual consideration. These items will allow for public comment, ten minutes. Purpose, this comment period will allow for public comment on individual, and will be held before or after the board's discussion of the agenda item at the discretion of the chair. Rules, two minutes per person, a person may speak only once, ten minutes total per item. All right. Ernest, anybody?
Thank you, Ernest Ashley, Nine Foster Street, and I am Chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. About two years ago, I believe, the Select Board requested the Open Space and Recreation Committee look into how to improve the area around the tennis courts of Pangry Park, and to start a planning process and perhaps conduct a feasibility study, similar to what we did with the West Wenham Park. And, um, we asked for clarification because at first the instructions were Pangry Park. And we said, well, we're probably happy with the community garden and the playing fields and other things. So we did focus on the tennis courts. And this is a picture of the tennis courts from the area where cars can park. Uh, they are in a dilapidated condition. And let's go ahead with the next slide, please. Thank you, another picture of the tennis court. And if you look in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the closest neighbors, which is the, the Boulders property. It is currently, these tennis courts are used for tennis and more recently for pickleball, where the people have put online and move on temporary nets. There have been some concerns regarding the pickleball noise, and there are signs saying the court should be used only during specific hours. And next slide, please. Okay, so we, um, with Sean Temmons of the Hamilton-Wenham Recreation Department, developed a list of what the recreation facilities are throughout the town. So we have Hamiltons and Wenhams, and then the school systems. And the only ones that are not listed are here, the four tennis courts at the WVIS, at the tee house, which are also lined for pickleball and used occasionally for that. So we have a pretty good distribution across the town. And in Pangry Park, there's the baseball diamonds and the softball fields, a small playground for generally elementary school or even younger people, and then the tennis court area. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we could do, and we did, is conduct a survey, and basically had four op, or three options listed. One would be to renovate the courts just as tennis courts, which could be lined for tennis and pickleball. To reconfigure the courts for a mixture of tennis and some for pickleball, and I'll have a graphic to describe that. Leave an area which could be built for other things. Now, bocce is also pleasant at the council of aging, but anything else like horseshoes or even volleyball, sand volleyball or something like that would be a low-cost alternative. It could also be in the general space. And then third option, remove the tennis courts and have a completely new recreational activity in the area. So this was kind of the open question. And we did also ask for ideas from the citizens that took that survey. And we have the survey results for you. Uh, next slide, please. So a few general questions were asked, age, and most people responding in the thirty-one to fifty. Do they have children? Most of them, two-thirds did. Uh, do they use Pangry Park? And quite a large percentage said weekly or monthly, and very few said rarely and never. And then most people, it was about a fifty-fifty mix between people coming from Hamilton and Wenham. And I think that's important when we think if we are going to be looking for funding or something, it would be not just Wenhams, but a Hamilton-Wenham effort, probably, of course, this. And the survey results, please. So, um, number one, renovate the four existing courts and line all four for tennis and pickleball. We had some fairly strong preference for that. And then, uh, option two, to kind of get a mix across those. Um, and for three, very few people were, um, just to do away with the tennis courts and come up with something completely different. And then let's go, let's stay on this one there. Other suggestions were pretty interesting, a splash pad, a mountain biking course. Now we are moving forward with West Wenham and does have a pump track for bikes in that. A skating rink, I don't think they were talking about concrete. I think they were talking about ice skating rink. Open space, dog park, other things that you can see on this list. I won't go ahead and read all of them. And then the last one that's kind of said, many mentions of noise abatement if pickleball was to stay as a primary use across there. So for some of the ideas, let's take a look at the next slide, please. So this gives you an understanding of the size of what is currently a paved surface there. It is now being used for four tennis courts, and some of them are being lined and used occasionally for pickleball. Some of the ideas that we discussed in the committee were to reduce that to two tennis courts, and then have some that were specifically lined and developed as pickleball. And then a presentation was made to, um, the Open Space and Recreation Committee about a potential skate park. And this was brought by a committee that had, um, a design for a memorial park for one particular Hamilton resident. So, um, again, this has given you a good idea of the actual space, which is fenced two hundred and forty feet by a little over a hundred feet. And it's big enough for four tennis courts as it's been used now, or two tennis courts plus other uses. One that was mentioned to us was basketball as well, and sometimes that can overlap with some of the other, um, ideas. So, um, this update is just that, telling you where the committee has gone. We're not providing any decisions or any recommendations. And you'll see in the next step, it's probably an open discussion with the select board on where do we go from here. Next slide, please. So to give you an idea of what a skate park is, um, these are examples, and this was the proposal that was presented. And I believe it has been around for some time, because I know the skate park was an idea when we considered what to do with the West Wenham Park as well. And so these are typically either a flat surface and some constructed out of wood and other things. This is what Beverly has. If you go down along, uh, the road as you take a right, stop and shop and go down that way. Beverly has what was flat courts, and then they have, uh, structures built on those. Those don't last as long. A concrete skate park would be a combination of perhaps excavation or construction right on top of the existing surface. And the next slide, please. So I also looked at, this was in the presentation given to us. I also looked at, um, online, and their estimate of somewhere around fifty dollars a square foot is a pretty good, accurate estimate. Some like this that might be a little bit more on the surface can be less. Some that are more involved in excavation and construction of curved structures, which are the things like skateboarding went crazy when pools were emptied and people could go in in that type of situation. So anyway, we don't have any designs. Uh, we just have some concept, and you could see that the space, if two tennis courts and three pickleball courts were, say, lined out, there would be enough space to do a fairly significant-sized park. And I think you have to commit to some level of size before it becomes really engaging for the use. But again, this was presented to us as a possible use that targets a underserved population that is between the elementary school-age playground and that automobile that takes them out of the playground situations. So I think it's next step slides. One more, please, yeah. So again, this is presented as an update to what we as the Open Space Committee has done. Now, that skate park was not listed as a specific option in the survey. I don't recall, you, how many respondents did we have to the survey? Was that presented up there?
Yes, it was like over four hundred and eighty.
Yeah, it was something like four hundred and seventy. So we got quite a lot of interest in the park and what to do with it. And the next steps were listed in the presentation made to us by the folks promoting the skate park, to engage the community groups, to understand really what the appetite is for a project like this, and maybe get other ideas, uh, community design or fundraising for the project. One thing I know is I think ARPA funds were a big part of our ability to execute the project at West Wenham. Maybe they are not still available. So this would be something we would be looking to the CPC to be able to fund. And because it is a shared facility of Hamilton and Wenham, it would be both CPCs that would be considered. And my understanding is if it was to be promoted that way, this type of project would be presented by the Hamilton-Wenham Recreation Department as a proposal to both towns, select boards, and to Community Preservation Act committees. So really, that's my presentation, and I presented it so that we can talk about what next steps. I don't think we're at a feasibility study yet, and I know from contracting the, the park, getting cost estimates for the various elements isn't something we can just go out willy-nilly to contractors and think, because we will have to go through a bidding process at some point. But I know there have been cost estimates made before for redoing the tennis courts, and they were pretty significant, um, four hundred K if I have a recollection of that. This skate park, about size-wise, you could be looking at two hundred to three hundred K for the skate park element of its own, if that is. I know that there's been some concerns raised about noise. My thought in one respect is there's a limited number of people that are actually that close. The boulders being developed, but it was built next to a playground and that sort of thing. So I would imagine that whatever is done, we'd have to take into account whatever noise restrict, uh, restrict, reduction we can affect. But other than that, I think we want to be able to move. But other than that, I think we want to be able to move forward and make this a useful part of the town again.
Ernest, the high school tennis teams, where do they play?
Well, for a while, they were playing there, but then they had to basically go out of town to be able to find other courts. But as it was noted on that listing of what the resources are, now they have new tennis courts being put in at the high school.
The girls' team plays right over there.
They've been using WVIS?
Yeah, the girls' team though.
Thank you, Ernest. I'm very excited to see this. I remember the discussion well from a couple of years ago. I'm actually a fan of the skate park idea since they started proposing it several years ago, so I really like that combined option myself, so I'm glad to see that as a possibility. So I'm very excited to see where this goes. So thank you for doing this work. Yeah, very excited.
Others?
Thanks for all the work that you and the committee done. Kate, I'm sure you had a hand in this.
Thanks be to Kate for helping together the presentation and keeping the committee moving on some of these items. So we do have a committee meeting tomorrow night. And, you know, I think we want to continue to develop ideas, but I am interested in any thoughts from the select board on how we might want to present this to town. We can do another survey. We could say we've moved things along and now we have some good options and ideas, what are preferences. That would be one thing. We could, I'm not sure we're in the same situation that we were in West Wenham in terms of a feasibility study where we engaged a landscape architect and they really came to the table with some great ideas and some of which we melded and I think we went back and forth. But in this, I think we could open it up for other ideas. As you saw, we had quite a laundry list. I do think having a mixed use makes the best use of that space. Obviously, some part of that will be a sport court and multi-use. But it could be augmented by other things, be that horseshoes or other that would make for a kind of a community area. I don't know if the horseshoes area is still being utilized over at Patton Park very much. I know they used to have a facility over there where people played.
I think it was very good. I think on the one slide where you had the whole list of possibilities that came up. So I think we ought to look at, you know, something different like the skate park or other things rather than just adding on to courts or facilities that we already have. Because I think that will attract more people into the park to participate in something new.
I agree. I like, I like option two as a concept. I noticed in the Survey Monkey that it had about 53% support for whatever the categories were strongly versus mildly. Whereas option one had 62 or 63% support.
Yeah, we can go back. Thank you, Michelle.
But I think, you know, I think even though there may have been a slight preference in the...
We stopped sharing?
A slight preference in the unscientific survey for option one. Personally, I think option two would probably be the best thing to focus on for the reasons that Deirdre and Gary have both said. Whether it's the skate park or something else is that third use, you know.
Yep, let's keep going. Down a couple. There's the tennis courts, and go ahead. Next slide, please. And the next two slides later. Thank you. Yeah, we've got pretty strong support for, you know, keeping tennis, obviously, pickleball as well. But I think that we can definitely use this. Goggleball pit is, this one, is going to be included at West Wenham. What is it? Karen?
I can tell you all about this. It's essentially, so it's essentially a pit that is, it can be anywhere from like 10 to eight feet across. It has a wooden circumference that's probably about three feet high. And then the kids get in it, and it's essentially dodgeball. But it is squishier balls and you can't hit anything above your waist. And so the kids essentially just chuck the, sorry, Ben. Do it like that, yeah. They essentially chuck the balls and they all kind of do this amazing dance of how they are going to not be hit. And as you get hit, you remove yourself from the pit and then your teammate jumps back in. And it can be used for kids. It can be a great marital problem solver. But it also is something that, it continues with physical activity. So you can have two to three balls, you can have two to three kids, but you can also have 10 to 12 kids. So it's a great way of keeping that engaged. And our Girl Scouts have purchased the, are using their cooking money to buy the goggleball. So...
So the Girl Scouts are going to put that in at West Wenham?
Yeah.
Good.
My only question, obviously I'm impartial to the goggle pit, is that what else, so the bocce, the bocce, we have a pretty new bocce over...
Council of Aging.
At the Council of Aging, yeah. So that would be...
They said they wouldn't be coming over to the park.
Oh, it's a very different thing. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be crossing the street.
So that's, yeah.
That would be the thing that I would remove from the list. I'm a huge proponent for, for that age group. They need somewhere to go. So if we had a skateboard, rollerblading, my only concern with, with having the two of them is that it's a big generational gap. Is there going to be a partition in between the pickleball and the tennis and the skateboard?
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay.
I just don't want them on top of each other. That can be a little bit of a...
Yeah, no, I think there would be fencing, there'd be three separate areas. Okay, I've got one other thing if we can go with the next few slides.
Ernest, do we want to see if maybe Sean Timmons wants to say anything? I know he's on...
Oh, he, okay.
Not to put him on the spot, but I know that...
Sean, are you there? Hi, Sean. Go ahead if you have a comment.
Oh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, no, I think it's a really, you know, a great discussion. And, you know, obviously, you know, myself, you know, I don't know if I have, you know, super strong feelings, you know, in any direction. But I do, you know, I think sometimes when you're looking at these facilities to make sure that there are, you know, separate areas for, for certain things. You know, if this was 10 years ago, 12 years ago, you know, the push was to really have one facility where you could do five or six things at once, or line pickleball on tennis courts, or tennis courts with pickleball. You know, I think we've found that, you know, having kind of the separate areas for the different activities tends to, to work out a little bit better from a functionality, programming standpoint. So, you know, that would really be only my, I guess, two cents into it.
Thank you. Okay, just before I leave, I'll provide you with a very quick update on the West Wenham Park construction. We are in a full construction mode with heavy equipment up there. You can see the entrance road on the left carrying up the hill and then the beginning of a walking track around the perimeter of the upper field. The photo on the right is of the upper field. It's been basically leveled in spaces to allow for the development of the broader area where a pavilion will be installed. Still looking at May as the opening. Some of the work that happened, or the snow froze up the construction for a few weeks, so we're a little bit behind schedule. And Kate's been working with them to get a new and updated schedule so that we can figure on when we can actually open it. And I have one other thing, and it's called the Higginson Playground for some reason. And one last slide, I believe? So, the Cedar Ponds Wildlife thing was an old Higginson estate. And all I could find about it under Higginson-Wenham, and you did a Google search, were photographs of the inside of this old estate. Now, you Google Higginson and you'll get up to a Thomas Wentworth Higginson who was in the Civil War and correspondent of Emily Dickinson and an abolitionist. But I can't trace the legacy back this far. This was a Frederick Lee Higginson house, and so I don't know. And perhaps someone else in the Wenham Museum or they may have a little bit more information. But I wanted to understand whether we call this the West Wenham Park or the Higginson Playground. And if we were to call it the Higginson Playground, what is the legacy that we would be associated with?
So that's the foundation that's on the top of that hill?
The foundation on the top of that hill was that house?
Notwithstanding the history, I would go with West Wenham Park.
I think the, going back to the records, I think the Higginson name was associated with because the West Wenham Park parcel came off of the entire grant to the Audubon Society.
Right.
And then at some point, Audubon provided to the town what is now the park area. So in the records, it's, we've seen it...
So it's not a donation from Higginson or anything like that? It's just...
Well, the entire parcel was given by the Higginson family through Audubon with that small parcel to Wenham.
Okay. Yeah, I just thought it was interesting to know a little bit more about the, the history. But right now, I believe our signs, when we were talking about designs in the last meeting, were West Wenham Park.
You might consult with Robbie Corcoran, who's a local historian. Wrote the book recently on slavery in Wenham, but he's done a lot of research on the historic houses in town. He may have some insight into the history.
And who was that again?
Robbie Corcoran. I can send you his contact info.
Great, that'd be great. Okay, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion and potential vote to sponsor and donate to the Hamilton-Wenham Garden Club Traffic Island Planter program.
It's over a year, the request from the town of Wenham, donation for their traffic island, as you said, planter program. And this is this year's request for 275 thou, yeah, 275 dollars. 275 dollars.
See, you put the cents on there.
That'd be a lot of, you're right, you're right. There'd be a lot of traffic boxes.
Do we have a motion?
Sounds good. Move to approved donation of 275 dollars to the Hamilton-Wenham Garden Club for their Traffic Island Planter program.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Is the run for the girls no longer taking place or are they just removing themselves from tonight's agenda?
We don't know. They just, they're going to withdraw their request from now, for now.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure where they, where it stands.
Discussion and potential vote to select a backup date and location to host the annual town meeting, should one be needed.
Yeah, so, I've never had to move a town meeting, but evidently you have to hold it within 14 days of the town meeting unless, you know, unless you, then you have to go through the reposting process and kind of the whole lead-up to town meeting. So, Joe's worked with Gordon College in between their athletics and their, also their functions that they need, their facilities for the one date works for them. And it's April 14th, a Monday night. So, you know, I know it's not super flexible, but I think that that's really our only option to have a backup date in a venue that can host a significant amount of people. And, you know, alternative to that would be outside somewhere.
And this is should we have to cancel Saturday or is this should they...
Well, yeah, a couple of things could happen. We could lose quorum and not be able to regain quorum to continue business, at which time Roger would have to call the meeting. We could, the other concern we have is, we have 680...
665.
665-person fire capacity between three rooms. So if we exceed that number, Roger has to call the meeting. And we can't just move over that business. We have to, town bylaw prevents that. So he has to call the meeting in its entirety. And then we need to reconvene within 14 days. And so that would be a good indicator that there's going to be more than 665 people interested in showing up. So we need a bigger venue.
And you've got one date at Gordon.
That's all that, between their sports and...
Then what's the date?
April 14th on a Monday.
We have a select board meeting anyway, so I believe we've all confirmed that.
So I'll make a motion that we set April, Monday, April 14th at 7:00 PM is the backup date and time for the annual town meeting with the backup location being Gordon College.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
All right, unanimous. Discussion and potential vote on expanding opportunities for members of the Wenham public to engage with the select board outside of our regular meetings.
Yeah, so I can take this one if it makes sense. So, we discussed this at a prior select board meeting, and the idea here is to pick up on the momentum that Karen and Peter have started with having regular office hours, which for Karen are weekly, Mondays at noon at the library, and Peter as chair monthly on, I think, the second Tuesday at 5:00 PM if I have that correct with Steve. And this is a proposal to add to those office hours in two potential ways. So it's, you know, a proposal for discussion tonight. So one would be expanding in person, in person rather, office hours and expanding the participation amongst all board members. Steve has already indicated that there's $1,000 available to fund or supplement the select board expense line item that would support this notion, which I have proposed here as six times per year, but maybe it would be quarterly, maybe we would try something different. But my thought was that six Saturdays per year to have up to a three-hour office hour that's manned by one select board member on a rotating basis. It could be here, it could potentially be, if we were able to work it out, in private Wenham business locations like the Teahouse. The food would be paid for through the town budget appropriation that was mentioned. And I think the, possibly the way to do it would be to set up something online where people could sign up for slots to meet during that two or three-hour period on a Saturday. The idea for this and for the second piece, which is virtual, is just to offer more, more times for people to meet when they might not be working, for those citizens who are working during the week full-time. And with respect to the second part of the proposal, virtual office hours, that is geared more towards people who are working outside of the area during the work week. And so my idea there would be to, again, have a rotation amongst select board members and to perhaps do a monthly Zoom meeting for up to two hours. Again, I'm not wedded to the particular time intervals, but that seemed to me to be maybe reasonable as a way to start, to have a virtual office hour. There would be one particular day selected and time selected. Maybe we do a Survey Monkey or something to try to get a consensus amongst townspeople as to, you know, is it Wednesdays at 5:00 PM, is it some other time? But to, to figure out what the time would be and then set that as the monthly Zoom so that everybody knows that that's, you know, when it is. And then again, to try to get as much participation amongst all the board members so that it's not a particularly heavy burden for any particular member to be responsible for either of these types of expanded office hours. And I think the Zoom one would probably also benefit from having scheduled time slots that people could log in and take. So, so that's what the memo lays out. And it's really, again, just for, you know, for board consideration and discussion. So, so that's what the memo lays out, and it's really, again, just for, you know, for board consideration and discussion.
Personally, I like meeting in person. So maybe, like, maybe we could do a combo. I would do it monthly, about six times a year, and maybe like every other, no, every third month, we do Zoom.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think having, offering both, in my mind, is, is good because it serves different segments of, of the community. So I think anything like that, to me, would make sense, a combination.
Other comments?
Thank you for laying it out. It's much easier to wrap my head around seeing it written in a memo, so thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'd be game.
I think if you have to pre-register, that's, that's like not a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, part of it means if, if, if we end up doing this.
By the way.
Yeah.
Have you got a lot of people showing up?
Mm-hmm.
So what's your thought on, on preregistration or slot, time slots?
I think it'll never work and people won't go. I think what'll end up happening is, is you're using this as a catalyst to be able to open doors to an open engagement and to have an open discussion. And people are gonna get jazzed up with that idea, but then when you start putting some regulations on, well, then you have to sign up. And, and I think they start to be disinterested pretty quickly. And it will be one of those things on a Saturday that they're gonna make the, the decision probably last minute. And they're gonna say, oh, they're, you know, Peter's around for another two hours. I might swing by in forty-five minutes. And, but the idea of having a, a set timeframe, I don't think that people will follow through. And I think you're gonna get super excited because everyone's gonna sign up and then no one's gonna show up.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, you know, I think it's, there would definitely be some fluidity to it. So I think I, I could get behind the idea of not having that and then figuring out based on the demand. You know, if we have one of these Saturday ones and there's fifteen people that show up at the beginning, and then you have to figure out, okay, you know, it can only take. Because, you know, people wanna have one-on-one time, obviously. So maybe it's something that would, we would revisit depending on the demand for either thing.
You know, it's funny, you would think that they want one-on-one time, but when I've had three or four people in the room, the discussion really is fluid. I mean, people are really open and, and a lot of times I don't know the answer. I have no expertise into what they're asking me whatsoever. So it's nice to be able to have other folks who have either been here for a long time or other folks who are kind of suffering from the same, the same issue. So it's, to me, it's, it has actually been pretty productive.
Perhaps too, that on the months leading up to major events like town meeting or special town meeting, you know, we don't wanna get into the quorum issues, but it might work well if we see that there are large numbers appearing that we'd have a pair of select board members.
Sort of, you know, has two separate.
Yeah, you could, you know, you could split the room or, you know, you two could handle the issue on a cooperative basis. Or, you know, years down the line, you might be, you know, two definite points of view that people might wanna be represented on. But certainly, I think Saturday is a good time.
You might wanna take the onus off them registering to speak with you directly in open engagement, but you might want to say during this time slot, we'll be discussing X. During this time slot, we'll be discussing Y. And that way, you don't have somebody, if it's eleven to two, you don't have sixteen different people show up with three A questions. You know, eleven to twelve will be three A, twelve to one will be trash, whatever it is that you wanna continue those.
Whatever the hot issue might be.
And, and, you know, have that all of the business at the end, but that can at least consolidate, hey, if, if there are questions regarding this. This is an open environment.
Yeah, I would just start it and have it open and fluid and see where it leads us, yeah.
So I guess one potential next step would be that I'd be happy to work with Joe, maybe and Michelle on figuring out, you know, for example, the Survey Monkey idea for the Zoom opportunity, when that would be. And then maybe getting some dates on the schedule for the in-person, the Saturdays and some Zooms. And then I could work through the administration on talking to the board members about, you know, who's gonna take what slots and how we're gonna rotate it. And then I'd be happy, as long as no one is, objects to the concept of the town. And again, I'm happy to be the one to do it, approaching the Teahouse. I mean, Vindromage is obviously small, but in the nice weather, they have that patio outside. I don't know, you know. Have you found, Karen, that like, is confidentiality and privacy in the shoe at all? I mean, do you meet like in a, in a closed room? Do you meet kind of out in the open in the library or?
Nope, I reserve the room upstairs, so it's completely confidential. There's no one that walks around. However, the conversation is not as confidential. It's more casual than it is anything else. So when people are expressing some of their concerns, they're more apt to say maybe something that they wouldn't have said on the podium. The one thing that I would throw out there is that the board itself, our, our board is occasionally looked at as, as a board that potentially doesn't work as well together as we should. And maybe this is an opportunity to show the town, if you have two select board members there at each time, that we are a cohesive board. There are things that we can do together. There are expertise that, you know, each person has in different ways, that maybe this is a way to showcase that. And to have two people there on a rotating schedule is not a bad idea.
I like it.
Businesses might be tough on a Saturday, but the places that aren't gonna be tough are places like the Community House or places like First Church that could potentially allow you for that area. But like the Teahouse on Saturday, it might be hard.
Right.
Just to throw a plug to Kate, we have a beautiful pavilion going up in West Wenham, so it also might be able to have some outdoor activities.
Okay. We can work on all those logistics.
You good?
I'm good, yeah.
Alrighty.
Are we voting on any?
What's that?
It does say potential vote. I don't, do we wanna?
I didn't know. I just threw that in there to give the option. I'm not necessarily sure that requires a vote, yeah.
Probably don't.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
When do we start?
After town meeting. It's Saturday, so. Yeah, maybe have the first one in May. So we wanna be able to advertise it a little bit.
Yeah. Whoever runs the Instagram account does a really good job of doing that. She sells me out every Monday morning.
All right, moving on. Discussion on town meeting operations and procedures, including motion wording, who will make motions and how questions from residents will be handled.
Seriously?
Well, I put, I put this here primarily to give the board any last opportunity to continue on any discussions we had last night. Additionally, I was anticipating the need that the select board may want to make a motion to amend the finance committees' capital motion, but that got ironed out last, last night. So I guess, speak now or have all your piece until Saturday?
Regarding reading the motions?
Yep.
I have problems with my time. Regarding reading the motions, Roger had said that he'll provide who's reading what and during that.
Yeah, so everybody.
Gets a script.
Yeah, everybody will get, it's about a hundred and fifty pages, a script, literally. Yeah, well, it'll be available the day before. Happy to meet up with you or we'll bring them in boxes and it'll be on everybody's table when you get there on Saturday. But it has literally every word that's spoken to the pause and take a breath.
And Gary's got a couple. I don't think you.
I think I have one of them.
Yeah, the veteran thing. And then Deirdre's got one and I've got a couple.
And then Karen, this would be the opportunity, we were talking a little bit more about the, some questions Karen's hearing from the community regarding the federal, federal, federal cuts impacting MSBA funds. So.
Yeah, I don't really have much to say about it, other than I've just gotten a lot of questions and a lot of just concern from folks. And I think it's kind of masking the excitement around the school. And, and I'm just a little concerned that we have a few folks that are on social media that are blasting a lot of information that is incorrect. And I thought that maybe as a board, it would be important for us to be able to distinguish what is correct and what isn't. I'd asked Eric, as I mentioned last night, for more of a talking points. I got a sentence and a half of not real talking points, so it doesn't, what he gave me doesn't really help support any conversations. But at the same time, I, I do think that this is a great idea to, for us as a board to be able to say, distinguish what's fact and what's fiction and, and put that out there. Because I, I'm really worried that maybe the miscommunication or the, the incomplete information will outweigh the positive message that we're trying to say with the school.
Have you asked Michelle Horgan for answers like that?
Uh, no, not in the last twenty-four hours. I mean, the, the information that came out today, and it's all over the news, is the hundred and six million that was removed from mass schools.
Yeah, I think it's hard to say with absolute certainty that, you know, something like this couldn't be impacted. But at least the way I see it now, in talking to Eric and just watching the news, generally, the federal cuts that have been happening that are impacting Massachusetts schools specifically are federally subsidized programs. And this is not one of those. This has a dedicated revenue source, which is one percent of our six and a half cent, uh, sales tax. You know, and there appears to be no, although it does have to be appropriated every year at the state budget. Once the, once, assuming we get two town meeting votes and we sign on the dotted line with the MSBA, you know, it's basically, it's a contract, contractually obligated to state to make those payments. So once you're in the queue, it's kind of like us with budgeting. We have our contractual obligations that we, you know, must achieve. And then it's anything else on top of that, that kind of becomes where the next level of cuts are. You know, but with all that to say, I mean, you never, I mean, who, who knows? To me, that's the thing, is you just, you wanna say, you wanna guarantee, but I'm not sure anybody can say without beyond a reasonable doubt that absolutely one thousand percent, those are just my thoughts on it.
Well, with the source coming from a known place, the one percent, certainly the money is already there that would cover the current fiscal year commitments by the MSBA. So I think we're in. The danger is thinking that another option would allow us to automatically assess those same funds. And that clearly is not the case.
I mean, I think that it's, it's one hundred percent factual and on point and persuasive to simply say, as you just did, that the school building assistance funds by the state are funded through a dedicated state funding source, i.e. a piece of the state sales tax, and no portion of that money is federal money. And so the Federal Department of Education or other federal cuts that we're seeing will not affect the state's school building assistance fund. I think that's true.
Is there a way we can put that on Instagram, Facebook, social media? I, I truly, like, some of the posts today are truly just incorrect. And I, I worry that unless we get some of this information out there, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some can, some folks who are on the fence, who are going to lean a certain way because they're nervous, and I don't think they need to be.
I mean, I, I believe if the select board wants to sponsor a message, I mean, we can put most anything out there. It would just be whether the board wants to agree on a counterpoint.
It should be, A, it should be the truth, right? And it should be countering whatever Karen's hearing.
So like this is one example that we're supposed to tonight?
So I think, yes, we can specify the fact that our current plan, knowing that the state has committed the forty-nine point two million dollars to the program, so long as we get the votes through this weekend, that that money should be available to us. But the assumption that in future years, that we can go to another option or if there's recession and there's less sales tax, whatever, that is gonna slow the line down of other towns getting in there.
So why don't, why don't we make a statement, this is the case, you know, barring any economic uncertainty?
So this is just one of many today, so I just took a screenshot and just said, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying, did you, did you wanna say it or did you?
So let's, can we get a statement out tomorrow on the social media?
Should just focus on, it should focus on the school building assistance fund. Right. Because that's what, that's what people seem concerned about, right? That, oh, is that money guaranteed?
Do we wanna call out? Do we wanna call out specifically circulation of, you know, I don't wanna say misinformation, but just say.
Not at all.
Just say as a matter of fact, not just the MSBA is a state program funded with a dedicated revenue source, i.e. one percent of the state's sales tax, and it has no.
Federal funding.
No federal funding component at all.
And then, and I think, and I think the last point, which will make people understand why we're saying it is, and therefore, none of the federal funding cuts to the U.S. Department of Education or otherwise have an impact.
They're irrelevant.
Are irrelevant to, to this, the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Fund. Because I believe that to be absolutely true, you know, if we're just talking about that fund. Start talking about other alternative funding, I mean, it, it, it makes it, it makes it even more so the, the better and more reliable funding source as opposed to these ideas of, well, maybe we can find funding for renovations, find other types of. For this one, we know, we know that all the points that we've just gone through are true.
So you'll do that?
Yep, I can do that. Do we need a vote on that or?
Might wanna vote on that.
Sure.
So I'll make a motion that the administration disseminate a public message in whatever format it deems appropriate for town meeting on behalf of the Wenham Select Board, making the points regarding the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Fund and its connection to, just making the points about the school building assistance fund that have been articulated during this meeting.
Second.
I'm ready to go. Vote. Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
All right. Is that it, Karen? Does that help?
Yeah, I was just worried. I mean, I think I've said it, you know, in a few different facets, but today, with just a little bit more information of what was going on federally, I think it really just is all over our social media. And I'm just worried at some point that people are confused.
Kate, you ready to attack this one, once we have it? All right. Alrighty. Discussion and potential vote to finalize and enter the town administrator's annual performance review into the public record.
Pull it up. This is like the side, this is the aggregate of the scores. The rest have been received by the assistant town administrator. He aggregated the scores and provided the sheet. And this is the select board's opportunity to make public comments. And this will also, by having it on this meeting, will submit it to the public record for their viewing.
This is the blended?
Yep. Yep.
Any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to commend Steve for exceptionally well-done job, I think.
Four point seven five.
The numbers speak for themselves, I think. Thank you for all the effort you've put in and for the exceptional job that you've done.
Public relations.
You're getting better now that you've got your.
Speaking up a little more.
No, no, your monthly report.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so I get better.
So, and Michelle, can you just focus in on the rating scale for the public for a minute? So on all categories, it was commendable and outstanding.
Yep.
And on leadership, it was a straight five, which I think is, you know, very telling. You know, I think that may be the most important of the rating categories.
Plus, he's good at budgetary financial administration.
Yeah, not bad at all.
There you go.
But, so, I also echo the comments, outstanding job.
Appreciate it.
So we need a motion?
We do.
Go ahead. Move to finalize the town administrator's FY twenty-four performance review and enter it into the public record.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone here, really. They make it easy.
Michelle and Joe, nice going.
We're fortunate to have the team that we have.
Yes, absolutely.
Discussion and potential vote on articles to include on the warrant for the anticipated special town meeting on the evening of June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Can we do this after, like, discuss this after, like, in May or something?
Yeah, yeah, whenever the board.
In May?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna bring it back this week, but that's, whatever the board wants. If you don't want to discuss it now, that's totally fine.
Well, we get.
Maze tight.
What's that?
June ninth is the meeting, so.
I think in April.
Thirty days prior.
Okay, so then.
We'll do it next time, April eighteenth, or April fourteenth, or whatever it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just make one note? I think I didn't see the CPC article on the list. Will you just check to change from the committee seat? From joint recreation to.
Did that get dropped?
I think that was, I think it was not on the list. Can you just make sure that goes back?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, I, discussion and potential vote to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town, the MOU's outlining terms to be included in collective bargaining agreements with the following unions for the period July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. AFL-CIO Council ninety-three, Local two ninety zero five, DPW, Panis Penevalon Association of Wenham, MCOP, Local three eight two, and Wenham Firefighters Association.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Before we do that, can Steve just summarize it for the benefit of the public?
Yeah, sure.
And especially, I think, the way it's gonna come up in town meeting, that the public needs to know that these funds are already in place.
Yep, so the way, to back up. So to summarize, we have three union contracts that are on a three-year cycle that align with each other, and they were up for renegotiation this year and will take effect the first day of fiscal twenty-six, which is July one of this coming year. And, you know, I feel like in this negotiation, it was, you know, given the labor pressures and inflation and all the things you see on the news with the schools and striking and things of that nature. And, you know, we were able to settle the contracts favorable for the town of Wenham and also fairly for the labor staff within the town of Wenham. We, the settlements ranged from about ten to twelve percent averaged out over a three-year period between the three contracts. And you will see at town meeting, it has a standalone warrant article that will authorize the funding of the first year of the contract as required by Mass General law. And the motion that will be made will indicate a sum of money that will be needed to fund all three contracts. And that sum of money will be raised in Article Three, the budgetary article, which will then, at the beginning of the next fiscal year, be transferred into the salary lines, appropriate salary lines to pay the payroll through the end of the fiscal year.
The main point is the funds for the new union contract are already built in to the current upcoming budget cycle. So it's not an addition.
That's right.
Yep. So did we have a motion?
Yes.
Second, yes.
Okay, ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right, discussion and potential. Karen, I don't know why people don't think we, like, work well together. We almost always vote the same. Okay, discussion and potential vote to recognize and sign the special state primary warrant.
Is there anything to discuss?
Did we just sign that?
Yeah, you just signed it. So that's the dates and times and contents of the special state primary warrant, which is only affects one precinct, and that's precinct one in town of Wenham. And it is former Jerry Paracella's seat.
Oh, yeah. Todd Rotundo.
Yeah, the number, I've seen the number.
We had Starbucks with Todd Rotundo carrying on, anyway.
Starbucks, that might be a nice idea for someone.
So do we have a motion?
Move to recognize and sign the special state primary warrant.
Second. Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Now look at this one. Discussion and potential vote to reappoint, reappoint Scott Schoenberger to the planning board. Why does it say reappoint?
Let Steve explain it. Yeah, he's on it now.
Yeah, so part of, yeah, so it kind of ties to Jay.
Oh, he's a temporary?
Yeah, last time the select board, a couple meeting cycles ago, the select board appointed him through the local election. The question that came up, we were going to appoint him through April ninth, twenty twenty-six. Then the question came up, could we get him on the special election? And the answer to that is no, because it only affects one precinct, so we do not have the option to add the second precinct. So this, now it's come back to the select board to reappoint him from, his appointment runs out on the tenth, so reappointment from the tenth to the ninth of next year, which is the regularly scheduled local election where the seat will become elected again.
Okay.
And filled through the election process.
Discussion and potential vote to reappoint Scott Schoenberger to the planning board effective April tenth, twenty twenty-five through April ninth, twenty twenty-six.
So just a question, when it comes up for, when it's on the ballot next year, will the term be whatever is left on Peter's term? Because this is your seat that he's filling, right?
Yeah, well, actually, that could be.
And you were elected last year and it was a five-year term.
When was your, when's your term up? It will be the remainder of the term, but then I just wondered, is that the end of your term?
No, it's not.
So, yeah.
So it'll be like, I think it'll be three years.
I think.
I think you have another year.
What's that?
Didn't you have twenty twenty-seven? Wasn't that the?
It's a five-year term, so it was through twenty twenty-nine, I guess. So that's, so it'll be three years left, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll fill the remainder of the term though.
Right, just curious.
Do we have a motion?
Move to reappoint Scott Schoenberg to the planning board effective April tenth, twenty twenty-five through April ninth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Unanimous? I don't have to read any of this, do I?
Nope, you don't.
Okay. L, other matters, this may have not been anticipated by the chair.
Is there anybody online?
Schedule, so.
No one with their hand up.
Are we?
Saturday schedule?
We're posting for twelve or twelve-thirty for us.
Do twelve. And that will give us time.
All right.
All right, move to adjourn at seven forty P.M. Roughly time.
Gary seconded. Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right.
See you Saturday.
Kate, do you want to catch up for thirty seconds?
Well, see you Saturday.
Yep.
No.